All right, I'd like to call this June 5th, 2014, Cookeville City Council Meeting to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson, Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Elps.
Here.
Councilman Albright, here, all present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Coach Chaffin?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented.
We have no changes.
All right, no changes. Have motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, before we get into our whole business and the new business, we have young men here who've accomplished a great deal, and we would like to recognize these young men. We have a proclamation for the Cookeville High School baseball team. Coach Chaffin, would you come up to the podium and I'll read this proclamation if that's all right? Guys, would you stand, if you mind? "Whereas the 2014 Cookeville High School baseball team recently completed an outstanding season, and whereas the team began the season by overcoming the loss of sixteen seniors and eight starters from their previous season roster to achieve the extraordinary, and whereas each game throughout the season featured a new hero captivating the Cavalier fans and leaving an imprint while creating memories that will last a lifetime. Whereas the Cavalier baseball team reached meritorious achievements being named region semi-champions, region champions, and sectional champions paving the way for possibility, and whereas the team persevered earning the opportunity to advance to the state tournament being the first team to advance since 1974, setting a historical first by being in the final eight, paving the way, raising the bar for future Cavaliers. And whereas the Cavalier baseball team is highly esteemed, their momentous season being etched in the annals of this community for present and future Cavaliers. Now therefore, I, Matt Swallows, Mayor of the City of Cookeville, do hereby proclaim June 5th, 2014, as a day of tribute and special recognition for the 2013-2014 Cookeville High School Cavalier baseball team in Cookeville, Tennessee, and wish them much success in all their future endeavors this fifth day of June 2014." Could we get a round of applause? We actually have some keys to the city for both coaches and some telepins for the team. Coach Chaffin?
Thanks, sir.
Here's proclamation.
Okay.
We have some little telepins for everybody on the team. Thank you for that picture, if that's all right.
Sure.
Probably best.
Stand in front of us. We gotta line them up here.
We'll stand up behind him and we can... Yeah, and you can get...
Congratulations.
That's cool.
Congratulations. That's really good.
Hey, guys, before you take off, I want to hear Coach Chaffin say something. I want to say something to you guys. You can sit down. This may take a while. You'll have three minutes, Coach.
I appreciate Mayor Swallows calling me out on that pledge, knowing I'm a public school teacher, and I say that every day of my life for the last twenty-seven years. I'd just like to recognize, I think we have six of our seven seniors. If they would stand up, just real quick. This is Ben Shelton. Ben was our catcher. And Ben was our catcher. Jackson Paythew was our centerfielder. James Paythew was our shortstop and also pitched. Alex Jones was a pitcher and a utility guy, played wherever we needed him. Slade Dale was a pitcher, and Clay Talkington was a left fielder. And like we said, like you read in the proclamation, we did lose sixteen seniors and eight starters. James is the only starter we had coming back. A lot of these guys, they waited three years patiently and trained for one year, and they made it a heck of a year, so I'm really proud of them. And we appreciate it, and we can't... You know, to a lot of people, this is not a big deal, but to kids at work, you know, every afternoon, year-round, to try to accomplish something, and when a lot of people... They played with a chip on their shoulder all year because a lot of people didn't think, you know, that we'd be anywhere near as good as we were because we lost so many players. And they did such a fantastic job and showed up every day and competed, made up their mind.
Congratulations.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just give me a moment, because usually we talk about, you know, buying buses and backhoes and things like that, and it's pretty fun to have you guys here. We're all very... I'm very proud of you, and Cookeville's very proud of you. And just give me a moment, just since I get to sit up here, I do get a moment, but I just want you guys to know, when I was in high school, my senior year, for you seniors, my senior year, our baseball team got in the state tournament, and we were in the semifinals in football. I played both those sports. I'm fifty-four years old now, and I still remember that. And I'm getting goosebumps right now thinking about it. You guys have the privilege, the honor, and the blessing to be able to think about that, to live with that the rest of your lives. It shaped you. You don't know it now, but it is. It has, and it will continue to shape you. And I'd like to see you guys continue that same type of attitude when it comes to your studies, your work, your marriage, your life. You will. And I gotta shut up because I can't get rid of these goosebumps. Thank you, guys. I'm very proud of you.
Coach Chaffin, I remember the hard ninety days.
That's right.
Back in the nineties.
That's right.
Actually played against Coach Chaffin years ago, and played with you. We played, I think, some summer ball.
Yeah.
If you were my coach, but...
Mayor Swallows is a pretty good player, by the way, so...
Well, that's a long time ago. But anyway, congratulations, guys. Yeah, this is something that'll shape you, and we hope you take this and continue to excel in anything you do, whatever you choose to do.
Thanks for all that you guys do for the City of Cookeville. You know, we live in a really unique town that's progressive and moving forward, and you guys have that vision. And as the father of three daughters, I appreciate that. I appreciate what you do. So, thank you. We'll give you a key if we get this new locker room. We'll give you a key to our new locker room. Absolute. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, on to the exciting stuff now. Item two, the whole business. Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 15th, 2014. Questions, comments about the minutes? Have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item three, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading, ordinance 140507, amending the budgets of the various funds and departments of the city for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this budget amendment ordinance has not been changed since first reading. I'm going to spare you going through all those amendments unless you want me to repeat myself from the first reading. But again, no changes since first reading, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson, for having motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. On to the new business. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 140608, providing a tax levy for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, as Vice Mayor Elps mentioned, we're going to talk about backhoes and buses for a while, so please sit back, relax, enjoy the show. I have a number of slides to go over with you in discussing 2014-15 budget. The first ordinance that you mentioned will establish a tax levy for the City of Cookeville for 2014 taxes. The tax levy is again set for... Recommended to be set at ninety cents. That ninety cents would generate approximately $6,507,000 for the City of Cookeville. That ninety cents would be broken down, but the general fund would receive seventy-nine cents of that, which is approximately $5,711,000. Six cents would be allocated to our debt service fund, which is $433,000. Four cents to our economic development fund, which is roughly $289,000, and one penny to our quality of life fund, which would be roughly $72,000. And I'd recommend your approval. I do have a slide. We looked at this in our work session. Again, this is based on 2013 property taxes, just where the City of Cookeville is, relation to other cities similar in size to the City of Cookeville. It's sorted from highest rates at the top. You can see the City of Cookeville is down toward the bottom, in the lower third of those tax rates. But again, it's a ninety cents property tax rate, no increase from this past fiscal year, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
It's good news.
Yeah. Seeing none? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 140609, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 1415 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I'm just going to run through the list of nonprofits and other governmental agencies and the recommended appropriation for those various entities, starting with the library, recommending $325,000. Cookeville Senior Citizen Center, $47,530. Upper Cumberland Regional Airport, $28,000. The Chamber of Commerce is a total of $30,000 with $14,750 from the general fund, and there's $15,250 that comes from the utility departments. $25,000 for the Chamber for the Highlands Initiative. I just want to point out that that is a $25,000 decrease over what was awarded for fiscal year 1314. $50,000 for the Sports Council. $25,400 for the Emergency Management Agency. Cityscape, $17,111. Cityscape Fall Fun Fest to be allocated directly for Fall Fun Fest, $15,306. The Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority, $6,769. The Cookeville Arts Council is $18,608. Cumberland Arts Society, $1,900. The Tennessee Rehabilitation Center is $53,589. That's a $5,000 increase over fiscal year 1314. $9,000 for the Clean Commission. UCHRA Meals on Wheels is $1,901. The Genesis House, $11,407. Helping Hands of Putnam County, $11,407. WCTE Public Television is $5,000. Another $5,000 for WCTE, which is directly for City of Cookeville Promotions and Advertising. The HJ Stevens Center for Child Abuse, $2,037. Kids Putnam, $6,000. The 13th Judicial District Adult Drug Court, $7,500. UCHRA's Putnam County Imagination Library, $10,000. Court Appointed Special Advocates, $1,500. Cookeville Children's Museum, $1,500. The Child Advocacy Center, $4,000. The Putnam County Veterans Organization, $6,000. And just to point out, that's a $2,000 increase... Decrease, decrease over the 1314 appropriation. Then we have two new recommendations for funding. It's Mended Hearts, $1,300 for Mended Hearts program, and then the Veterans Honor Guard, $2,000. So a total award for nonprofits, joint agencies is $714,855, and I'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 140610, making appropriations for the various funds and departments and agencies in the City of Cookeville for the 1415 fiscal year. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Okay, I have several slides, so I'm going to talk fast. Stop me whenever you have a question. I'll start with the general fund. We have $24,021,000 in recurring revenue that we have budgeted and anticipate in receiving. Point out some transfers that are coming in from other funds to the general fund is a total of $81,769. That's $75,000 from the Economic Development Fund, $6,769 from our Quality of Life Fund. And we're proposing a $498,000 capital outlay note to fund some of the capital equipment that we have in the budget, so a $498,000 in a three-year capital outlay note. And that would require additional approval from council at a later date to actually do that. Total revenue budgeted, $24,601,123 for the general fund. And just to give you an idea on the various revenue items within the general fund, sales tax is the largest revenue that the city has, single line item. And I've budgeted $11,113,000 for fiscal year 2015 for sales tax collections. That's 2% over what I'm projecting to receive for fiscal year 1314. Right now, I've got us projected to receive $10,895 ending June 30th, 2014. So a 2% budget on sales tax collections, and you can kind of see from the chart what our sales tax collections have been over the last few years, going back to 2002, 2003. A couple of the other line items that are significant revenue items for the City of Cookeville, in lieu of tax payments from the electric departments, $1,085,000 is what's budgeted. Water Department, $284,000, and our gas system, $171,000. Also have $1,100,000 budgeted for wholesale beer taxes. And business tax is budgeted at $1,039,000, and our wholesale liquor tax for inspection fees is $320,000. So those are some of the larger revenue line items that we have within the general fund. I think those items, the sales tax, property tax, those other items that I mentioned with the in lieu payments, the wholesale beer tax, business tax, and the liquor inspection fees amount for about 90% of the revenue for the general fund. And this is kind of a graph breaking all that down. The green is local sales tax. The larger blue slice is the property tax, which is roughly 24% of the total general fund revenue. But again, total revenue of $24,601,123. Then what's going to happen with those funds? How do we spend that? How do we provide the services to the citizens of Cookeville? We're budgeting $22,978,872 in operating expenditures, the $714,855 for the nonprofits and other governmental ventures. We do have some transfers out, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later about those transfers out, but a total of transfers out of $632,000, out of the general fund, back to other funds, and that's broken down by $555,000 going to our Economic Development Fund, $74,000 to our Animal Control Fund, and $3,000 to the Tree Board Fund. We budgeted $773,820 in capital, and all police is $448,000 of that. Fire Department, $75,000. $92,500 for public works, $72,200 for leisure services, $71,600 for parks and maintenance, and $14,500 for our codes department. So a total budget, $25,099,547. And just to point out, we have no new permanent general fund positions funded in this budget or recommended in this budget for the general fund. We are implementing the merit-based pay system that we discussed last fall, put into place actually last fall. It goes into effect July 1. And just a real quick summary of that merit-based pay system, there'll be evaluations performed on the employees during their anniversary month, the month of their hire. Their merit increase will be completely based on that performance evaluation. And this budget includes a merit-based pay range. Employees, depending on their evaluation, could get a merit-based pay. They could get zero, depending on their performance evaluation, up to a 4% raise if they were outstanding and exceptional. So it's a range anywhere from zero to 4% depending on their evaluation. And to point out, $555,000 transfer from the general fund to the Economic Development Fund, that's for any land and right-of-way for various projects that are ongoing right now, as well as any infrastructure improvements that may have to be done around Bennett Road and Monlet Creek Road. We've also recommending $9,780 increase in the transfer that goes to the Animal Control Fund. That's a 15% increase over what was allocated this past fiscal year. So we have, again, a total budget, $25,099,547. And I'm going to go through each department real quick with you, just to kind of give you a summary, department by department. And within the General Government Department, it's a total operating budget, $2,768. I'm sorry, I'm looking at last fiscal year. For fiscal year 15, it's $2,922, and we have the contributions to the nonprofit, $714,855. Just to point out a couple of the increases within the General Government Department, I budgeted an additional $63,000 for utilities, streetlights, the traffic lights, utilities for this building, so that's increased $63,000. Again, the $555,000 transferred to Economic Development, and the $74,000 transferred to Animal Control Fund. Then the Police Department, it's $8,085,000 operating budget, $448,020 for capital. The cap... Or some of the items that are funded in the Police Department budget is five patrol vehicles and their equipment. That's $160,000 for those vehicles. Fencing at the Police Department's impound lot, $22,000. We're going to replace sixty of the digital cameras that are inside... That are in the vehicles, the patrol vehicles, that's $220,000. And a new dispatch radio console that has various new safety features once we upgraded to the digital two-way radios. Dispatch console, this dispatch console has some new safety features for the officers, and that's $46,000. Within our Fire Department, $4,541,000 in operating budget and $75,000 in capital. That capital is a twelve-lead AED with a monitor. That's $30,000. And then we have the fire department has applied for a grant for a new pumper truck, and we have matching funds in this budget for that grant, should that grant be awarded to the fire department. Then our Leisure Services Department, $1,676,000 in operating budget and $72,200 for capital. The capital is $8,000 for repairs to the gymnasium floor, zero turn mower for the sportsplex, that's $9,200. A service truck is $20,000, and to construct a new concession building at Can Creek Park, that's $35,000. Within our Parks and Maintenance Department, $1,381,000 in operating budget and $71,600 capital budget. The capital budget is looking at re-roofing the cemetery building, $4,000. Service truck, $20,000. Two zero-turn mowers is $18,400, and then some improvements and repairs to the Senior Citizen Center. A new roof at the Senior Citizen Center is $22,100, what we have budgeted, and some locks and crash bars for the doors, the external doors at Senior Citizen Center, that's $7100. In our Public Works Department, $3,099,000 for operating budget and $92,500 in a capital budget. And the capital is broken down, a heavy-duty pressure washer is $5,500, and a backhoe, $87,000. We had a backhoe that caught fire and burned up this past year, so we're replacing that backhoe. And then our Codes... Planning and Codes were combined budget. Up until this year, we're proposing separating their budgets out. And for the Codes budget, we have $803,789 in operating budget and $14,500 capital budget. And the capital is a large format scanner, that's $10,000, and then $4,500 for various hardware and software. And that hardware and software, we split that between the general fund and the utilities, so the general fund share is $4,500. And then in our Planning Department, splitting them out from the Planning and Codes combined budget of last year, they have an operating budget of $468,493. And that budget come... Last year, over these two budgets for this fiscal year as compared to last fiscal year is a 1.94% increase. So we tried to keep that budget, separating them out, tried to keep them without a huge increase. Sometimes it's easy for those budgets to grow when you separate them out, but we've managed to keep them with a relative small increase, but I think it gives them the funding they need to carry out their mission. Now I do have... I just want to point out, we do have a seasonal employee, a temp seasonal employee for the Planning Department. They'll be working in our GIS department. We lost our GIS employee, but she's willing to help us on a temporary basis until we get her position backfilled. So I do have that funded in here as well. So again, just comparing Planning and Codes to last fiscal year, their budget last year was $1,227, their budget this year is $1,272, again, 1.94% increase. And that gets us to the... That's the last page I have for the general fund. They have a fund balance projected to start the year of $8.7 million. Once you look at the projected revenue, projected expenses, we are looking at decreasing the fund balance, $498,000. That's still going to leave us an $8.2 million fund balance at June 30th of 2015, which is a healthy fund balance. So I'm just going to keep moving on. That's all the slides, all the information I have about the general fund, unless you have questions. If not, I'm going to jump right over to State Street Aid. State Street Aid, where we pave, take care of roads throughout the city. Have revenue estimated at $793,750. We have expenditures projected at $1,137. Projected spending into fund balance, $343,000. That'll leave us with a projected... That'll leave us with a projected fund balance of $609,000 at June 30th of 2015. We do have $700,000 budgeted for paving next fiscal year. And we have budgeted $307,000 in capital. That capital, just to break that down for you, is $14,000 for a walk-behind saw, $10,000 for a vibrating roller, $6,500 for a bobcat blade, $130,000 for a long-arm brush truck, $120,000 for a tractor with a long-arm mower, and $26,500 for a 3/4-ton heavy-duty service And that's all I have on state street aid. I'm going right on to sanitation. Sanitation has a projected revenue of $1,461, with projected expenditures of $1,522. And we are looking at spending into fund balance, $60,000. That's only going to leave us with a $244,000 fund balance at June 30th of 2015. We do have some capital budgeted in sanitation, $99,600 in capital. That capital breaks down into dumpsters and roll-off containers, that's $65,000. A heavy-duty pressure washer there for washing those trucks, that's $6,600. And residential carts is $28,000. Again, spending into fund balance, $60,000, leaving us with a projected fund balance of $244,000. Our animal control fund has projected revenue of $230,600, with projected expenditures of $227,000. I have budgeted, as part of the general fund, an increase of a transfer from the general fund to the animal control fund, and it was $9780 increase. So that would get the transfer from the general fund of $74,000 as a transfer to the animal control. I'm showing that as revenue. So $74,000 in transfer from the city of Cookeville. Requested the same 15% increase from the other governmental entities within Putnam County. So requested from Putnam County in the budget I sent to the county executive's office, $75,000 transfer from the Putnam County to help with operations at the shelter. We'll request from Monterey, $6,900. And from Allgood, $5,750, $5,750. And from Baxter, $1,001,500. And those are all 15% increases over what they given for '13 and '14. But again, we're looking at having a projected fund balance for the animal control fund at June 30th of 2015 of $134,000. And we're building the new animal shelter. Right now, it's under construction. It's my best guess estimate at the operating expenses for that new shelter. It's bigger, we can take care of more animals, so it's a guesstimate at this point down there. But hopefully, that facility is scheduled to be completed in October.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Two weeks.
In our economic development fund, I have projected revenue of $394,635. Transfer in from the general fund of $555,000. We have projected expenditures of $1,202,000. And also transfer money out, $75,000. That transfer out goes back to the general fund. So just kind of breaking that down for you. We have, finishing up with our retail development consultant, $30,150, along with the mowing at the business park. That's included in that operating section. The $75,000 transfer to the general fund, which is $50,000 of that, $75 is for the sports council, $25,000 for the Highlands Initiative. We have the $555,000 related to land, right-of-way, infrastructure improvements. I have $500,000 to finish up the business park next year, which is part of just the fund balance, what we've been trying to finish for the last little bit. So I have $500,000. That all depends on what gets finished by June 30th and what gets billed. But again, $500,000 for the business park. And then within our TVA invest prep grant that you all previously approved, $117,000 is budgeted to finish that up in next fiscal year. And we're looking at having a projected fund balance at June 30th of 2015 of $433,958 in our economic development fund. In our quality of life fund, we have estimated revenue, $1,405,000. That's primarily the grant for the rail trail project. If we get to construction, then that revenue will come back in on the grant related to that project. There is just one penny of recurring, recurring revenue for this, for this fund is one penny on the tax rate, which is roughly $72,000. So the rest of that revenue is primarily the, any grant proceeds that'll come back for the rail trail project. The expenditure is budgeted is $1,636. Again, that's primarily for, hopefully, constructing the rail trail, rail trail project this coming fiscal year, getting that started. There is a transfer out to the general fund, which is $6,769, which is for the rail trail authorities' operating budget. But we look at having a projected fund balance, if we were to actually construct this first phase of the rail trail project, we would end up with a fund balance of $166,000 at the end of next fiscal year. Our capital projects, general improvements, large projects, we fund that through our general improvement bond fund. And we have projected bond proceeds to issue some debt this coming fiscal year, $3,200,000 in bond proceeds. I have expenditures and transfers of $4,379,000. Those expenditures and transfers are finishing up some projects that we started with the bond proceeds that we issued in December of 2013. So we'll be finishing up those projects, so that's part of these expenditures. And then new expenditures, which will be related to that, $3,200,000 in bond proceeds. Now, that bond proceeds would fund right-of-way acquisition for Bennett Road North, the extension of Bennett Road North, as well as the Falling Water Bridge. That's a request that's been made by White County. We own half of the bridge at Falling Water. White County's requested that we participate in replacing that bridge. It's one, I think, the worst-rated bridge that they have in, or let's say they have, that's in White County. Technically, the report goes to White County. We get a copy of the bridge inspection report. We'll get one in August, September of this year. And they've asked us, again, to participate in replacing that bridge. So we have, I've tried to work that out, should we decide to do that, to try to be able to make that happen in a bond issue, if we try to do that this coming fiscal year. So that's in that total $3,200,000 bond issue. Just looking down the road, trying to plan some other projects that we've talked about that would take bond proceeds to complete those. Again, Bennett Road North, the construction, as well as we keep continuing to discuss a police station, and where that stands, and what we might be able to do there. So just looking down the road, potential bond issue again in 2015, 2016. So when we issue debt, we have to pay it back. People, the finance companies, investors, want it paid back. So how do we do that? We do that through a debt service fund, a general obligation debt service fund. It has a projected fund balance to start the year of $7,520,000. We're projecting revenue into that fund of $3,322,000. And projected expenditures, which is, and those expenditures are principal payments on our debt, as well as interest payments, $2,929,000. We're looking at actually adding to fund balance, seven, adding $392,000 to fund balance, leaving us a fund balance of $7,913,000. The goal with this fund is to not let our fund balance get below $1.5 million. We have some variable rate debt. We've had variable rate debt since '99. So we want to make sure we have enough reserves, should that variable rate debt increase, the interest rate on that. Right now, it's below 1%. It's been below 1% since 2008. But we want to make sure we have enough cash reserves, should that interest rate begin to climb. So that's the goal, is we don't let that cash, that fund balance, get below $1,500,000. And then if you just kind of look, wanting to know what kind of outstanding debt we have on the books, well, this is our current debt right now, where it stands today with what we have issued. So at the beginning of fiscal year 2015, with the debt we just issued back in December, and then the debt, the principal that we paid off this fiscal year, we're going to be just below $17,500,000 in outstanding general obligation debt. Not utilities, just general obligation debt. And that kind of shows you how that debt is paid off over the next 15 years. That's barring any new debt issues. That's how it looks. And just to kind of show you, you know, if we issue the $3,200,000 in debt this coming fiscal year, this will give you an idea of what happens. We would jump to about $18,000, $19,000 in debt at the beginning of fiscal year 2016. And that just gives you an idea of how that would pay off over the next 15 years, 16 years. And then just to give you an idea, what kind of debt capacity do we have if we issue $3.2 million in debt this year? Well, we can issue $10 million in debt in '15, '16 for various other projects, police station, extension of Bennett Road North. Those projects, $10 million, and then you can see our debt, general obligation debt would climb to $27.5 million at the beginning of fiscal year '17. And then we start paying it off, as you can see, and it's all paid off by fiscal year '31. And then you just wonder, well, does the city have any more debt capacity? Oh, I didn't put that slide in here, but we do. The city does have debt capacity. Even if we issue $10 million in '15, '16, the city could issue another $7.8 million in debt, barring, without raising any additional revenue, just on projected revenue, what goes into the debt service fund today. That's how we pay for our debt. So I'm just going to keep going to the next fund. Employee health insurance fund. We have projected revenue of $4,380,000, $4,360,000 in projected revenue. And that revenue is premiums that are paid by the city of Cookeville on behalf of their employees, as well as the contributions from the employees for their premiums toward the health insurance fund. So $4,360,000, we have projected, projected expenditures of $4,322, looking at adding to fund balance, $38,000. We have a projected fund balance at fiscal year, June 30th of 2015, of $3,462,000. I do have projected claims to be $3,681,000. The claims have been climbing a little bit the last few years. This is a chart to show you our health claims, because we are self-funded, self-insured. So we pay those claims out of our own pocket. Claims dropped just a little bit in this fiscal year, a little lower than what we had budgeted and anticipated. Fiscal year '13, claims were $3,559. Got them projected to hit $3,482 this fiscal year, and then got a 5% increase for next year, $3,656. But we did increase the premiums that are paid by the employees, as well as the city. That went into effect in January of 2014, and to help offset this, this increase in the claims from, you can see the big increase we had from fiscal year '12 to '13. So that's helped. So we're looking at, again, adding to fund balance, $38,000. Our work comp liability fund, we have projected revenue of $551,000 and projected expenditures of $550,000. So as we process work comp and any liability-type claims, they run through this fund, and we ultimately bill those back out to the various departments. So that fund balance is projected at $776,000 at the end of next fiscal year. Our tree board fund has projected revenue, which is a transfer from the city of Cookeville general fund, of $3,000 and another $290 in various donations, basically. So $3,290 in revenue, $3,100 in expenses. Projected fund balance, $9,835 at the end of next fiscal year. The drug fund, projected revenue of $80,500, which is primarily confiscations that is awarded by the courts to the police department. So $80,500 in projected revenue, with projected expenditures of $79,400. To kind of break that, some of the big-ticket items down for the, of the expenditures, we have two vehicles for the criminal investigation division, that's $31,000. Those are two used vehicles, is what they're looking at purchasing. A K-9 unit, that's $10,000. Various drug investigations, $12,000. And furniture related to that new dispatch console, $15,000 for the furniture and equipment that goes with that dispatch console. So again, $79,400 in expenditures and transfers. That projected fund balance at June 30th of 2015 is $34,344. Within our water, water quality department, we have projected revenue of $14,69,000. Projected expenditure, $17,822,000. Looking at spending into the fund balance in cash, $1,192,000. And that's been planned by the water department to spend into their cash on some of their capital projects, but they have projected fund balance at June 30th of 2015, projected cash is $8,271,000. And our gas department, projected revenue of $12,319, projected expenditures, $13,926, spending into fund balance, $920,000, leaving them with cash reserves at the end of the year, projected at $12,886,000. And our electric department has projected revenue of $55,333,000. Projected expenditures and transfers, $56,561, looking at adding to fund balance or cash, $1,275, leaving them with cash at the end of next fiscal year of '12, a little over Our customer service department, which is funded by electric, gas, water, and sanitation, has projected revenue of $1,281,000, with projected expenditures of $1,281,000. So whatever the budget is, whatever we spend in the customer service department, we bill that back to the electric, gas, water, and sanitation department, so it's a, it's a wash. And the last city department that I have is Cookeville Regional Medical Center. They have a projected revenue of $270 million and projected, projected expenditures of $286,951,000 and $14. I'll just point out, the capital, they have $13,432,000 budgeted for capital, and $8,500,000 for hospital renovations. When you look at it in total, including Cookeville Regional Medical Center, the city has a $414 million budget for fiscal year '14 and '15. But I would recommend approval and happy to try to answer any questions.
Is everybody awake?
How come the pressure washer for the sanitation costs $1,000 more than the other pressure washer? I was asking Connie, she didn't know.
Garbage trucks are dirty.
I just, you know, just.
Higher pressure.
Okay. Connie just explained to me it's all right.
She's got it, okay.
Do I have motion for approval?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, questions, comments?
I was noticing on the chart that on the sales tax, we've had four years of going upward, which is good. And I'd like to salute you and all this hard work you've done presenting this budget, and all the department heads, doing a lot of due diligence and work maintaining a budget. Thank you so much.
Well, the department heads make it easy in working with Mr. Shipley, as far as my part goes. They make it simple for me.
They just give you the numbers.
Makes it easy for us.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
We do. It's a lot of hard work, and appreciate your planning, because of the, like, for example, the debt fund, the general obligation debt fund. You know, by budgeting the way you do, and then having variable rate debt, as low as it is, that, that puts us in a much better position when we've, even when we finally do pay that debt off. Because of our margin of how we budget, and where it actually is, where our general obligation debt fund is in really good shape.
It has, it's continued to grow each year, because we budget for a higher interest rate, and it's coming in at less than 1%. So all that's being added back to our debt, our debt service fund balance.
So as those go away, as those expire, we'll be, we should continue to be in great shape. So that's our goal, is to leave, leave the future in better shape than we, than we inherited. So, anyway. Any other questions, comments? All vote?
Or yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, item seven, consider resolution 140611. All right, item seven, consider resolution 140611, amending the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, chapters six, seven, and 10. Sponsors, Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, as Mike mentioned when he was presenting the budget, and as you recall, the city did implement a merit-based pay plan last year, October. At that time, the employees were provided a summary of their current pay and how their pay would be impacted in the fiscal year 2014 as we transitioned to the new plan. Beginning July 1, 2014, merit increases will be based on annual performance evaluations. This resolution will incorporate language to address changes to chapter six, the classification plan, and chapter seven, the pay plan and wage administration chapters. It will be removing references to the step increases and cost of living allowances that were provided prior to that, and adding a new section about the job classification methodology and incorporating annual merit increase language. There is also a small change to chapter 10, section 1.0305. I hate to go through and read all this. The summary, the detail of the language is on the board, and it is outlined in the resolution. Chapter six, classification plan, it adds a whole new section describing the methodology of the new plan that was looked at by the consultant that we had. We removed the references to pay steps and incorporated pay ranges. Deleted the reference to pay step increases and placed it with annual merit increases in a section that's detailed in that particular chapter. One section that we added, the city council may approve funding for potential merit increases and any market rate adjustments for the pay scale during the budget process. We felt it was important to incorporate that language because it is to you during the budget planning process to approve those. The pay plan provides for ranges within each pay grade, and upon submission of a satisfactory performance evaluation, the director may grant a merit increase. There was language in before that gave the city manager, with a request from a department director, if there was exceptional performance with city manager approval, an additional step could be granted in the old plan. That opportunity still remains, so that language has been changed to read an increase for exceptional outstanding performance may be given with city manager approval. So that basically remains the same, but that will come to the city manager from the director. We talked about adjusting the pay scale once again. It's based on labor market conditions, and occasionally it will be reviewed on a periodic basis by myself, the finance director, and city manager. The pay schedule may be adjusted periodically as necessary to ensure that the city's pay practices remain competitive with changes in labor market conditions. Normally, if an adjustment is needed, this is accomplished by increasing the pay ranges by some common percentage. And then we add it in, once again, the city council may approve funding for potential merit increases during that budget process. The other change that was made is chapter 10, disciplinary action. There was a section in there that addressed employees that had been the subject of suspension or probation would not be eligible for their step increase. This new program coming into play, we implemented an accident review board a few years ago. Thankfully, we've not had a lot of employees affected by it, but that board reviews each and every accident or incident each month. That board can actually come back and make a recommendation to the department director. There's a cumulative point process that's in place, and they can actually come back and recommend suspension for an employee if there have been more than one or multiple preventable accidents, if you will. We've talked about it a couple of times. Directors felt like it might be double punishment, if you will. They're losing pay if they're suspended, and then in addition, their increase is being withheld. So we have added to that section that accept those that are the result of accident review board recommendations. So if an employee is not acting in an appropriate fashion perhaps, and is the subject of disciplinary action in a punitive manner, that still remains. But if it's the result of action taken as a recommendation from the accident review board, we're going to accept that. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions, but I would recommend and appreciate your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'd just like to commend this Fowler on the hard work that you put into this. This is a transition for the city to go from the step base to the merit, I mean, from merit to the performance base, excuse me. All the department directors being involved, we're putting more pressure on you to evaluate your employees. I think the job descriptions are more clear. You've educated, done a good process of educating the employees of the city, what's expected of them and what the department heads are expecting, how they're going to judge people. So I think it's a fair and very transparent pay system.
Well, I appreciate the directors and city attorney and Mr. Shipley and your all's support as we've gone through this transition, because it is going to be a change.
We're still in training on it, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot at staff meetings, and we'll talk about it a lot more. It's, the key is that, well, I think the main problem is that people evaluate people differently, and that, but we want to try to be as consistent and fair as we can, so.
I think it's one of those subjects that, just being human, it's not something that you're always looking forward to doing, but we've made some changes to the tool, we're working with supervisors. And if you approve this this evening, at next pay period, employees will receive this resolution with the changes and the new evaluation tool, and we'll try to transition July 1.
Gail, when do you start these new evaluations, or the evaluations in this new format?
July 1.
July 1.
Anybody that has an anniversary date, July 1 or after, so that everybody will be on the same page at their next anniversary date.
Anything else? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Item eight, consider approval of employee health insurance administrative services agreement and stop-loss contract. Sponsors, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I have a few slides, not near as many as what I had. And this is two items. It's an administrative services agreement as well as a stop-loss reinsurance contract. And I want to try to roll it all back into one recommendation, so just kind of bear with me as I go through this. The city's been self-insured for health insurance since 1998, and we have, since 98, we have purchased reinsurance or stop-loss coverage. We have $150,000 specific deductible. We don't have an aggregating deductible, we have a specific, $150,000. So we pay the first $150,000 on any claim on any person that's covered under our health plan. The current policy that's expiring June 30th, 2014, has been with Highmark Life Insurance Company for stop-loss. And they've had the stop-loss coverage for the last three years, Highmark has. And the expiring premium, based on the current enrollment this month, is $211,111. And they break that down, they bill us by contract. For every single health insurance contract we have, they charge $1975 per month. For every family contract we have, they charge $47.26. So that works out to $211,000. Now, we participate in the Blue Cross Blue Shield network. Blue Cross Blue Shield administers our plan. And Blue Cross Blue Shield, whenever you have a stop-loss carrier that is outside of the Blue Cross Blue Shield network, that's not Blue Cross Blue Shield, they charge an interface fee. That interface fee is $1.20 per employee per month. So that works out to $7,070 that we pay to Blue Cross Blue Shield because we have Highmark as our stop-loss carrier. Okay, now I'm trying to get to somewhere with all this. So the renewal options for stop-loss, we got a quote proposal from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They have a subsidiary company called Blue Re, and they provide reinsurance. And they've quoted it over the years, I think they, Blue Cross, I think even had it early in the 2000s. We've had various companies provide stop-loss since 1998. So we have two options. We have Blue Cross Blue Shield provided a proposal that on current, based on current enrollment, equates to $225,223 for stop-loss coverage. And that's $20.07 for a single contract and $51.13 for a family contract. The company that has it currently, Highmark, their proposal is 200, for their piece of it alone, is $225,001. They break it down by $22.16 for single coverage and $49.58 for family coverage. So there's also that interface fee that you have to pay. If you go with Highmark, we have to pay Blue Cross Blue Shield this interface fee. So bear with me, I'm still trying to get to where I'm headed here. So on top of stop-loss coverage, we have an administrative agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We pay Blue Cross Blue Shield to participate in their network and for them to process our health claims for us. We're ending a three-year, multi-year agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So June 30th, 2015, we had rates with them locked in for the last three years. So Blue Cross came back with a proposal, they wanted to increase our administrative fee for participating in their network and for them to administer our plan. And what they have, what we've got them down to at this point is for, for the medical contracts that we have, they're, their proposal is they're wanting to charge $36.50 per employee per month and $4.03 per employee per month for the dental, administering our dental plan. So that piece of the administrative contract is $239,431. Because they gave us a proposal for stop-loss, trying to get them to give us another multi-year agreement on our administrative contract. Don't go up on our administrative contract if you're awarded the stop-loss coverage for this next fiscal year. So they have agreed to a three-year rate hold on our administrative contract if they get the stop-loss coverage for one year. They know it's just one year on the stop-loss coverage. Every year, we're looking for stop-loss coverage. We have to deal with those insurance companies every year. They always, or in the past, they're always looking at 15%, 20% increases on stop-loss. So we do whatever we can to get that lower, working with our broker, Cumberland Insurance. We do everything we can to get that fee lower. So there are, let me just point out, if we look at a three-year rate agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield, there are some conditions for that. One of the biggest condition that they have is that, within that three-year period, if we decide to leave their network and go somewhere else for health insurance, then they want, they will charge us one month's fee of their administrative agreement, which is roughly $12,000, if we leave sometime in that three-year period. That's one condition. The other one is they retain the right to adjust the fee for any changes in the health plan, the way it's structured right now, or anything that changes in the legislation or law that could drastically affect what they have to do to administer this plan. And with the Affordable Care Act, their fee didn't change, and I can't think of anything that more drastically changed healthcare than the Affordable Care Act. So this last, so they didn't, they didn't adjust their fee because of that, so I don't really see that being an issue. And then if our enrollment changes by 10%, they reserve the right to adjust the fee if our enrollment changes by 10%, but it doesn't change by 10%, or it hasn't in the past, let me say. So where am I going with all this? And the summary is, what I'm recommending is that we award the contract for stop-loss coverage to the proposal from Blue Re, which is a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield, for fiscal year 14, 15. And when you look at that and the administrative fees that we will be paying Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have a $244,322 projected fee to Blue Cross Blue Shield for their administrative services, $225,000 for their stop-loss company. It's a total premium to our health fund of $469,545. Versus if we leave the proposal with the current company, which is Highmark, it's a total cost to the health plan of $476,000. So awarding it to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we can lock their administrative fee in for three years, and at least it saves us $7,000 over the other option that we have for 14, yeah, 14, 15. So that's what I'm recommending, is administrative agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield, it locks in the agreement for three years, the fees for three years, as well as they would have the stop-loss coverage for 14, 15. And that's all I have, and that's my recommendation for you. Took me a while to get there, but that's where I was headed.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Mike, I have a question. That, when they talked about changing their admin fee, it's locked in for three years, and the ways they can change it is if we change, technically, if we change the plan or legislation changes. But how small of a change in the plan? I mean, if we up our deductible, I mean, that's a very small change. Do you think that, I mean?
No, we've changed the deductible in the last three years, since it was currently locked in, that did not affect the premium. Just talking with our, with our account rep, she said, I can't think of really anything that you all are going to do that might change that plan, but she said it's just a condition that I have to point out to you. But I, we've changed the plan over the last three years, and various deductibles we've changed, and it didn't affect the locked-in rate we had at that point.
And if we change carriers within the three years, it's just a one month?
One month.
So $12,000.
One month, yeah. Yeah, so whatever the enrollment is that month, times those rates that are, that are 37, 33 for medical contracts, and however many employees are covered by, under dental, is 403 for that, which is roughly $12,000. Yeah, if we look at leaving the Blue Cross Blue Shield health plan that we've created since 1998, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
All work. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't let it go. All right, item nine, consider appointments to the public building authority. Sponsors, city manager Jim Shipley.
Okay, I'm trying to read this here.
Ms. Kathy, will you wake him up?
I'm gonna wake. You want to put his glasses on?
Okay, the terms of Steve Copeland Jr. and Joe Albright are expiring this month. They have agreed to serve another term, and there are also the public building authority would like to have Nelson Forster replace George Johnson in his term.
Six-year term.
Yeah, and it's for six-year terms.
Wow.
And I would recommend that's to be appointed by the city council and ratified by the city council, so I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
We're glad to have the person step up and volunteer.
Yep. Appreciate it. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 10, consider approval of a quitclaim deed to the state of Tennessee for land at Burgess Falls. Sponsors, Mr. Davidson.
Mayor and council, first item in your packet should be an option to purchase agreement between the state of Tennessee and the city of Cookeville. But before we talk much about this, what I'd like to do is give you a few facts of why we're talking about this. City was contacted probably 12 to 14 months ago by a local surveyor, Charles Whittenburg, and he was doing a boundary survey for the state of Tennessee at the Burgess Falls State Park, and ran across a remnant of property, strip of land, whichever. And he started calling the city and asking us, did we have deeds for it, those kind of things, trying to figure everything out about that piece of property. And some months after that, Charles continued to work on the project, and we were contacted by a gentleman, Bill Avant, from the state of Tennessee. He is their GIS and land acquisition manager, desiring to, or the city, to convey that property to the park. And we asked that he send us agreement, and it be a quitclaim-type transfer. And they've done that, had the city attorney, city manager have reviewed this, everybody's satisfied with it. Everybody's satisfied with it. And the second document in your packet is a legal description of that property. Some pretty old dates there of land transfers. But if you'll notice the last paragraph, this property was conveyed to Cookeville in 1930, some years after, 10 or so years after probably the city purchased the Burgess Falls State Park property. The third bit of information that I included was real estate assessment data. You'll notice on there that it's about, they indicate it's about 12.1 acres. I think the deed says it's 13.4 more or less. And the fourth item in your packet is a Bing map. And I think, there's been quite a bit of discussion about this, but you see the little house icon and the double yellow line. That's, that's basically this strip of land that follows Falling Water River, that the state is interested in the city transferring ownership to them. Mr. Shipley, there were a few questions about this property. Mr. Shipley and I took a field trip down there a couple of days ago. Were very lucky in that we ran into the state park manager, who had been there 10 or more years, very knowledgeable about this strip of property. And he told us that there are no structures on this strip of property. It is adjacent to the state's property in that they own a small strip on each side of that river. So, it's adjacent, and went on to tell us that they would like to expand the park down into that area with nature-type trails, walking trails, and, Larry, maybe running trails, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Great.
There, there's only one adjacent property owner. And I probably told you in the work session, the city council in 1973, the major piece of property where the Burgess Falls State Park is, transferred ownership by warranty deed to the state, provided they would build a state park at that location. And so, he went on to tell Mr. Shipley and I, the manager did, that they're looking for every foot of property they can get. They ran across this, and that's why we're here considering this tonight. For your benefit, if you don't care, Ms. Fowler, a few years ago, I was, I was able to give her a lot of archives from Burgess Falls, and she put together a PowerPoint. So, I stole four or five pages out of her PowerPoint, just to provide some additional information about the park. First slide entitled, "The Early Years." In June of 1921, the city of Cookeville took bids for a hydro plant erection at the falls at Falling Water River. Then, in July of '21, the mayor was directed to sign a contract for the construction of the first dam in 1921. The second slide talks about the current dam because in 1928, heavy rains and flooding washed the original dam and the powerhouse away. And, and I thought it was pretty unique that that first, that first power plant there was only like 360 horsepower generator. It was only large enough to provide some lighting for the town at that time. And I remember reading some old documents of where you could maybe only burn your lights four hours in the evenings back at that time. But anyway, when they built the new dam in 1929, they increased the capacity, basically tripled to 1,100 KW. And 1930, so, so we went on generating power there. Then in 1934, the city started, city was growing, needed more power in excess of what they were able to generate with this 1,100 KW generator. So, they started buying power from the Tennessee Electric Power Company. And the next slide, basically entitled, "Cookeville Outgrows Burgess Falls." In 1939, the Tennessee Electric Power Company partial requirements was assumed by the Tennessee Valley Authority. Then in 1944, the city of Cookeville signed a contract with TVA and started buying all of its power from TVA, and continues to do that to this day. Another interesting date, 1950, the property that the city originally purchased prior to 1921, and then the strip of land we're considering tonight, 1930. In 1950, the, the city leased that property to Tennessee Game &amp; Fish for their use. Then in 1970, Game &amp; Fish portion of the state transferred that property back to the city of Cookeville. We took ownership again. Then in 1973, as I alluded to earlier, Mayor Petit and his council at that time elected to warranty deed that property over to the state of Tennessee, provided they would build a park under the Natural Areas Preservation Act of 1971. And just an additional fact, we did a, we did a feasibility study down there in 1981. We sort of thought, knew going in what the results would be, but it wasn't economically feasible for us to go down there and look at anything at that point. So, with all of that, I would recommend your approval. But by quitclaim deed, we convey the strip of property that was found to the state of Tennessee to hopefully let the park do some other things in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I thank you for taking the time to going out there and seeing what exactly was there. And I know that the park ranger had come a few years ago and talked to some of us about their need for more property in different areas out there. So, I know that this, this is not going to provide them parking area, but, but the hiking trails, they could probably use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if we give this, give them this strip of land, will they build us another state park?
I hope. Not quite large enough.
No, they've been good to us in that, in that regard. And I was looking at this thing, in November 2, 1944, city of Cookeville signs a contract with TVA. Did you sign that?
Funny guy.
Had to ask.
He wasn't even thought about.
Anything else?
Yeah.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time will come.
I know. All right, item 11. Consider authorizing city manager to enter into an engineering contract for the design of water and sewer improvements to serve the proposed Victor Project. Sponsors, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here tonight seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into an engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies Incorporated, engineering company that's done quite a few jobs for our department in the last couple of years. The cost of the improvement, or the cost of design work is an $88,800, not to exceed number. The design objectives would be to design water sewer services to get out to the potential project site, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Item 12. Consider awarding bid for the cleaning services for the Kane Creek Recreation Center, and sponsored by the Leisure Services Department. Sponsors, Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We advertise and receive bids for cleaning services for the Kane Creek Recreation Center and Gymnasium. Received three bids, and we're recommending the lowest bid meeting specifications, that's advanced cleaning service, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is when we open up the floor. Well, this is when we hear from officers, councilmen, and city manager. Item 13. We hear report on the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System, and sponsors, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, we recently received notification from the Federal Emergency Management Agency that our application for, or to the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System had been approved. We now have been certified as a Class IX CRS. The NFIP, NFIP is a Community Rating System, was started in 1990, and it was developed to recognize and encourage community flood plain management activities that exceed minimum standards. And if you do so and qualify for a CRS rating, that helps to reduce premiums for policyholders. We had to submit an application that we had to address four different categories to show that we could achieve a certain number of points. The categories were public information, mapping and regulations, flood damage reduction, and warning and response. Ken Young with the planning department was the lead on this, and he worked for several months. But anyway, we are now a Class IX community, which results in a 5% discount for all property owners that participate in the flood insurance program. One other thing to note, that there are more than 22,000 communities in the nation that are participants in the National Flood Insurance Program, and less than 5% have achieved a CRS rating. So, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I just want to say thank you, and thank, thanks to Ken Young for doing all this.
Sure, the homeowners will appreciate it.
Yeah.
A 5% decrease.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, this portion of the meeting, we open up the floor. If anybody would like to come forward, say anything. Please keep it to three minutes. This has been a long meeting. All right, anything from the council?
Couple of things going on this weekend. Tennessee Tech has a huge fundraising event, Golden Eagle Golf Tournament, that starts tomorrow. And ongoing for the second weekend, WCTE's got their great auction fundraising, so try to support our local television, so.
And the hop rally was a success. We had about 2,300 bikers in. Looking forward to seeing what the sales tax revenue was for that period of time. They chose to go to Memphis in 2016, but they will be back here again next year. So, we'll have them two years in a row.
Let me say something about the History Museum today.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to say what's going on.
Ma'am, would you please, yes, just so everybody can hear you, and so that they can hear you at home, on TV.
I'm Yunita Jenkins. Not that that really matters. But the Cookeville History Museum will have a, it's from 1 to 3 Saturday. It's a postcard exhibit, and it's honoring Jean Evelyn Warren. Her nephew is coming from New York, and he's going to be presenting these postcards. And it's going to be a very eventful day, so I hope some of you'll be able to come. It's from 1 to 3 Saturday. And then, on June the 26th, here in the council, there's going to be another Cookeville History sponsor. It will be a story on a slave that was born in Putnam County in 1832. She went to South Dakota, became quite famous, and the lady that's coming is going to impersonate her and tell her story. That's June the 26th, at 7:30, right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? This meeting is adjourned.